Okay, so we're gonna call the meeting to order. And if we could all stand for the flag salute, that would be great, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, let it be note that all the commissioners are present this morning. Peter will not be here with us today, but we have very capable staff to handle it with us. So I'm gonna go, are there any agenda changes, Annette?
Yes.
Okay.
Item E2 is gonna be continued to March 22nd, and it will be re-noticed.
Is that the only one? Okay.
Can I ask a question real quickly? I had some information on that item submitted to all of you, does that carry forward?
Yes.
Sorry, just wanted to share.
Okay.
Thank you.
No problem. Okay, so we're gonna go to the public comment, if there's anything that the public would like to talk about that's not on the agenda for today. Okay, seeing nobody going to the mic, we'll go ahead and close public comment. And we will go, there's no consent agenda, and just wanna see where we're at with minutes.
The next meeting will have three sets of different minutes.
Okay, great.
So, yes, there.
Thank you. I was, I knew that you had asked about that as well, okay. So we will go right into our public hearings, and item number one is an extension of time, and it looks like Scott is going to, nope, Gina.
Thank you. Good morning. So first item on the agenda is a request for an extension of time. Applicant requested to extend the expiration of tentative, approved tentative parcel map 2008-058 for Ted Follendorf. Originally, that was a two parcel, parcel map, creating two 20-acre parcels. Tentative parcel map and negative declaration was approved by the Board of Supervisors December 11th, 2012, initially for 36 months. The map was eligible for a two-year automatic extension through State Assembly Bill 116, ultimately giving the map an expiration date of December 11th, 2017. The applicant did make a timely filing of an extension back on the 7th of December, and after circulation of the application, virtually receiving little to no comments from any of the commenting agencies, we're here today. So unlike the subdivision maps, we not, we are not required to make a finding of, of...
Oh, thank you.
Good faith.
Good faith effort.
Totally escaped me, that's not uncommon, but, so we don't have to make that good faith effort finding with the tentative map like we do with the subdivision maps. There have been no changes in circumstances, so we're still relying on the original SEQA document, and there is nothing to necessitate a recirculation or any modification to that original document. Just so you know, there is a registered commercial cannabis cultivation site on the subject property. It's relevant for this, this particular request, but it is necessary for me to inform you that that is, that is actually there. The applicant has recently obtained a, a permit from the onsite sewage division of the Environmental Health Department in the effort to satisfy his, his onsite sewage division condition on the original map for profile holes, finding acceptable soils for adequate sewage disposal, necessary to obtain approval to record the map. So at this point, they are requesting, or I should say, Mr. Follendorf is requesting a two-year extension of this map, for which we are recommending approval. And just so you kinda have an idea of the location, this is approximately two and a half miles northeast of Murphy's, off of Two Mile Road, which is located directly off of Highway 4. So if you have any further questions?
Yes, when, when did the department consider the request as complete? When, when did you accept the request as complete?
So the application was actually deemed complete after the first 30 days of the acceptance of the request for extension, which was December 7th.
So your formal acceptance was...
Thirty days after the December 7th, the application was deemed complete to process.
Great.
Any further questions? Okay, Mr. Follendorf, would you like to come up and make a presentation?
I think she said it all, but she, I haven't, he's down to it.
Okay, thank you. Just for the record, since he wasn't at the mic, he has nothing to add to what staff already presented. And so do any of you have any questions for Mr. Follendorf? Okay, we will go right into public comment then. Is there any public comment? Wow, Gina, you did a really good job on this one. Okay, so seeing no public comment, I will bring it back, close the public hearing portion, and we will go to deliberations. Nothing to deliberate, all right?
Nothing to deliberate.
Then do I, can I get a, any, any changes gonna be made to the recommendation, or is everybody good with that?
I'm good with it.
You're good?
I would suggest, just in case there's any question arises, that on the 1, 2, 3, 4, whereas, right before the semicolon, we, we add the words, "Which request was accepted as complete on," I guess that would be January 6th, 2018?
On the 4th?
The 4th whereas.
Okay.
I'm good with that, are you all good with that?
Yes.
Two, three, four, five, okay.
Okay, one more time?
Okay, so it'd be for up to two, two years.
Yeah, two years.
Comma, "Which request was accepted as complete on," and I think what you said would be, it would be January 6th, 2018.
Okay, and Gina, when you're ready, could you read the recommendation as amended, please?
Staff recommends the Planning Commission adopt Resolution 2018-014 approving a two-year extension of time for approved tentative parcel map 2008-058 based upon the findings included therein as amended.
Thank you. Can I get a motion?
I move that we accept the 24-month extension.
As amended.
As amended.
Okay, in a second, please?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was easy. Okay. So item number two on the agenda is going to be continued with notice, so I'm gonna, we're gonna move right along here. Going into item number three on the agenda, is going to be the appeal. Before I start that, I just wanna make a quick statement that we have a whole lot of appeals before us today. I'm gonna be kinda strict, and Annette's gonna help us by running the clock about the 15-minute presentation time periods. Scott, you can't go over?
I will not.
Unless you're presenting new information, as well as the presenters, if you're presenting new information, obviously we'll let you keep going, but if it's not new information, I'm gonna rein it in.
What if my presentation's so riveting, you just don't notice all the times?
We'll let you know. We're gonna time you. Okay, so we are ready for item number three, which is 2016-929, an appeal by Daniel Gibowitz, and I have a really bad name, so I can get away with pronouncing wrong. I'm sorry. So we're ready for you.
All right, as you said, this is Appeal 2016-929, Appeal to Planning Directors' Denial of Commercial Cannabis Cultivation Registration 2016-929 for Daniel Gibowitz. That's how I've been saying it. All right. This cultivation site is located at 200 Indian Ridge Road in Mount Ranch, APN 016025105. The denial is based off a COCA compliance inspection that occurred on May 11th, 2017. Numerous violations were found at that inspection, including improper posting, lack of fencing, unlocked gates, unhoused generator, and unpermitted electrical in a shed on-site. COCA compliance officer notified the appellant of the violations. A correction notice was issued requiring the violations to be corrected within 10 days. The notice was received and signed for by the appellant. Here's a picture of the correction notice, kinda hard to read at this size, but it states that, that they needed to provide proof of corrections within 10 days commencing 5/11/2017. So that would put the 10 days at the 21st of May, which falls on a Sunday, so by fall Monday, which would be the 22nd of May. And that is signed by Daniel Gibowitz. On May 26th, so five days after the 10-day notice, 10, 10 days expired, COCA compliance recommends denial of the application due to not receiving any proof of corrections. Later the same day, COCA did receive an email showing some corrections, however, the pictures were incomplete for what was required, and they were received late. On November 21st, registration was finally denied by the planning department, and the reasons stated in the denial letter were failure to adequately fence and secure the cultivation area, failure to meet posting standards, failure to house generators, and failure to permit the electrical in the shed. This was appealed by Mr. Gibowitz on December 6th. He states that he corrected all violations within the 10 days and can provide proof, and then he discussed compliance with the Water Quality Control Board for a good chunk of the letter, but that was not a reason for denial, so it will not be discussed in this presentation. So to talk about the things that he was denied for, first, failure to meet fencing security standards, outlined as the section that requires that. Here are pictures from the inspection. As you can see, there are, you can see some fenced posts, but no fence, and that is kind of a, a running theme for this site, with all these pictures, lots of fenced posts, but little, little of no fence to be seen. Here's some more pictures. Here, there's a little bit of fence, if you squint, you can see some, some of it along this fence line here, there is some fencing in there, but unfortunately, most of the site was not fenced. The other reason is failure to meet posting standards. We all know this section of code decently well, it has to be on the signboard with reflective material. Here's the posting for the registration, there is no signboard, no reflective material, and in this picture, no fence. Again, the next reason is failure to house the generator on-site. All generators have to be in an insulated shed of some sort, and here's the generator that was in use on-site, uninsulated, sitting out in the open. Other reasons, failure to comply with state, federal, local laws. The local law, which he failed to comply with, was in Section 15 of County COVID's Building Code that requires any structure with any electrical to be permitted. Here is a shed on-site with electrical, there's some lighting, here's a spike strip with a bunch of stuff plugged into it, and there is no permit on file. As of December 19th, the date that he turned in his appeal letter, there was seven months after the initial inspection, there was still no permit on file for this shed on-site. So he had not applied for anything even seven months after. So to sum things up, the application was denied due to the inability to meet the ordinance standards of fencing, posting this permit, housing this generator, and permitting the electrical in the shed. The appellant states that he corrected all the infractions within the allotted timeframe, however, we do not have any evidence of that being the case. As a result, we recommend that you adopt Resolution, Resolution 2018-04 to deny the appeal and uphold the Planning Director's decision.
Mr. Watts, the COCA enforcement officer who inspected the site is in the audience, and he can answer any questions you might have about the conditions on the ground during his inspection.
Okay, are there any questions? Would you like to have Mr. Watts come up and answer for you? No? Okay. Then I'm going to go straight to having the appellant come up and do their presentation. Is the appellant present today?
He doesn't appear to be.
Okay.
And I've not received any communication from him asking for any continuance or anything of that nature, so.
Okay. Then I will go to public comment. Does anybody in the public have any comments to make on this appeal? Seeing none, I will close public comment, bring it back, if you have nothing to rebut, I'm sure. So do any, does anybody have any further questions? Are you all clear on what we got before us? Okay. Then I would say, Scott, if you're ready to read the recommendation.
All right, any changes to the...
Did I not, I didn't close public hearing, excuse me, according to Julie, so I was closing the public hearing and bringing it back. Okay, we're ready for you.
Any changes to the resolution or anything? We're all good?
No.
All good.
I recommend that Planning Commission adopt Resolution 2018-04 to deny the 2016-929 appeal, upholding the Planning, Planning Director's determination to deny the application 2016-929.
All right, thank you. So moved, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Who was that, the seconded?
It was Mr. Ladish, Commissioner Ladish.
All right.
Okay, second one. We're gonna go to item number four on the agenda, 2016-593, and Scott, you're gonna be presenting that one as well?
Yes, I actually was...
I have an announcement on that.
Yep.
I'm recusing myself, this is a Kirkpatrick matter. Because I own real property, that it joins both the Kirkpatrick parcels, both this agenda item and the next one, my property lies directly to the west. I do believe that the, the grow was within 500 feet of the property boundary. The APN number of my property is 50-021-8. It's in Township 3 North, Range 11 East, Section 28. And so I'm gonna leave the room, and somebody can come get me when you're done with these...
Do you wanna be brought in during public comment? You can't.
I can't.
I guess you're not coming back till we call you.
I'm not coming back. I don't think I need to recuse myself separately for each of the next two.
No, we'll come back and get you when the second one's over.
Well, it may be faster than, than you think, because I was notified two days ago that they were, they want a continuance, they've recently acquired new counsel, and they want more time.
So he doesn't have time to go get donuts?
No.
Probably not.
Okay. Okay, so let's go straight to talking about the continuance. Do you have a reason or a letter or something for us on the continuance?
I spoke to them over the phone, I said that they need to have someone here, is anyone here, hopefully someone here is here to represent them, I don't know if anybody is.
Is there anybody here representing Kirkpatrick?
It does not appear to be.
Okay.
I, I notified them that since it had already been noticed and is on the agenda, that is up to discretion of the commission, that they should have someone present in case it is not granted.
Do you have a reason for the continuance? Because they need, they seeking legal counsel?
They, they just got new counsel, and that was their, their reason that the counsel did not have.
And their new counsel couldn't appear here today to request a continuance?
That was part of the reason the counsel had something going on, barrier or something.
Did they tell us?
But they didn't say?
No. He did not.
Nothing, you're ready. Okay, Ethan, can I question this with you on the one appeal that we had before that, that received a continuance based on legal counsel? Is this any, does this have similarities at all to it?
Well, the only difference would be that it seems like Kirkpatrick could at least be here to explain that he's retained new counsel and, and has for a continuance on that basis, maybe he didn't even show up.
Did he give a date specific that he wanted to?
No.
Okay. Okay. How about? Yes, we can discuss the continuance.
Before, now, wasn't, didn't we have a similar thing before, where nobody showed up, but they said they needed counsel, and we did not grant the continuance and got burned by it?
No. It was a little bit different.
Yeah, the one incident was, was Snowden, and Snowden appeared, and it was before the Board of Supervisors, he explained that his attorney, Ken Foley, was at a hearing in Stockton, and that couldn't possibly be there for the hearing, and the board elected to go forward with the hearing. And then when it went up to Superior Court, Judge Harland said that at the absence of counsel, it was a sufficient basis for, or the unavailability of counsel is a sufficient basis for, for a good cause for a continuance, and we, we should have granted it. I mean, in this case, we don't know who the lawyer is, whether they've actually retained lawyer, they didn't tell us the, the name of the lawyer, they're not here to ask for the continuance. This looks like, sort of more like a default type of situation to me.
But I thought we, in the Planning Commission, there was one time when we did not grant a continuance, and I thought the board sent it back to us.
Oh, that could be that the board did that.
I believe you're correct that the board did send one back, but the difference was they actually appeared. They appeared.
Yeah.
We don't even have anybody here to, and we don't have anything in writing.
Correct.
Did you get an email or a phone call?
It was a phone call.
When was that?
It was late Tuesday afternoon.
After the deadline even.
I personally wouldn't want to agree to the extension, however, if it's a short extension, a week or so, or two weeks, it at least avoids the specter of this sending it back down garbage.
How are...
And it's irritating, because I see he's already...
Yeah.
Extended it from February, this is from, from a prior hearing date, I don't know what it was, to this date, so this will be a second extension.
In December, January, yeah. What, do we have an agenda in the next couple of weeks that is less full?
The eighth is pretty light.
All right. Well, I, sticks in my craw to do it, but I think we're gonna continue it to the, to the eighth.
Okay, well, I'm not willing to continue it, I just don't think it's right, I think...
No, it isn't right, but I think in the long run, kick yourself in the foot.
You think it's gonna just kick back? Okay. I would, I need to go to public comment. There was another person that came in the door a minute ago, nobody, are you representing Kilpatrick? Okay, no? Okay. So I'm gonna go to public comment and see if anybody has public comment on a continuance for this particular appeal. Okay, seeing none, I will close the hearing, bring it back to the commissioners to continue discussion on the continuance. So my issue is that the notice of a continuance came in after the deadline, we have nothing in writing, we have no attorney being stated, this has been continued before, and it's dragging our agendas out, we planned for an entire day of hearings, we actually were planning dinner here tonight, and it, it's not fair to all of us to be disrespected in this way. We're here to service him and help him with his appeal, he could have at least given us the respect of being here. So I am for having the hearings, I understand it can be kicked back by the supervisors, but I'm willing to take that chance.
Well, you've convinced me. How's that?
I like you.
Right now.
So...
If, if three of you wanna do it, fine. I mean, not, not...
Can the record show all those various elements in our denial of continuance?
Sure, we could add, in, something to the resolution to the effect that, what the chairman said.
Yes, I mean, all those points, I think, should be on the record, so that the board sees that, and that there was a prior continuance.
Okay, so we need to vote on the continuance, I'm gonna need a motion to deny the continuance.
I move that we deny the continuance, how's that for all, the full flip?
Good, I need a second.
I'll second.
Okay, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, motion carries 4-0, taking note that Kelly is recused. Okay.
I'll go get Kelly.
He can't come in.
That's right, we're gonna have to do the next one.
We have to do the next one.
Yes. Okay, so we will start... Sir, I'm, we're waiting for somebody to come in, or we're expecting somebody, you're not representing Kirkpatrick, right? Okay, thank you. Okay. I just wanna make sure.
Yes.
All right, then we are continuing on?
We are continuing on.
We'll start with 2016-593, Appeal of Planning Director's Denial of Commercial Cannabis Cultivation Registration 2016-593. Site is located at 10420 Hogan Dam Road in Valley Springs, APN 050021035. COCA compliance inspected this property on May 23rd, 2017, numerous violations were found, including improper posting, hazardous electrical, unlocked gates, unpermitted hoop houses, among other things. COCA compliance officer notified the appellant of these violations.
Excuse me, Scott, but there, are we on for item number five now?
Correct.
And is there a request for a continuance for item number five?
That's what we just talked about, wasn't it?
Or four.
Or four.
Okay.
And four and five are same, same caliber.
Yes, okay, okay, gotcha.
But we're on item four. Where are we at here? So numerous violations were found on this property, they were notified of the violations, correction notice was mailed, requiring violations to be corrected, however, the mailers returned, returned to sender, no mail or receptacle, unable to forward. COCA compliance re-inspected the property, they finally got back to it September 6th, 2017, again, found numerous violations, including improper posting, hazardous electrical, unpermitted hoop houses, illegal camping, and numerous junk and debris on-site. They notified the appellant of violations, correction notice was issued, requiring violations to be corrected within 10 days, it was given in person, and the appellant signed the correction notice. Here's a picture of that correction notice, sorry about the bad scanning on that, signed by Mr. Kirkpatrick, stating that he would provide proof of corrections within 10 days. Within that timeframe, COCA compliance did receive correction photos via, they received correction photos, and a note stating that the electrical and junk and debris were removed from the site. However, there were no pictures of that, so COCA compliance did a re-inspection to verify that the corrections have been completed, again, found numerous violations on-site. The trailer that, where the illegal camping occurred had been removed, however, another had taken its place. Junk and debris was still present, fencing was damaged and insecure, and there were unhoused generators on the property. The State Water Quality Control Board also did an inspection on the same day, they issued a notice of violation due to unauthorized diversion of water into on-stream reservoirs that had been created. They required the applicant to comply within 30 days to their, their rules and regulations. That did not happen, and the appellant received a second notice of violation on December 5th from the Water Quality Control Board. On December 22nd, the planning department denied the registration for failure to comply, or failure to notify the county of their new address, false and misleading information regarding the water source, failure to comply with fencing standards, failure to house generators, illegal camping... illegal camping, failure to comply with the State Water Board, and failure to apply for county permits to create the dams in which they were in violation of the State Water Board. Denial was appealed by Mr. Kirkpatrick on January 5th. He did not offer a rebuttal for the denial, nor offer any arguments or new information. So we'll go over these reasons for denial. First is failure to notify the county new address. In the ordinance, they require within seventy-two hours of a change of address to notify the county, and that did not happen. As a result, we were not able to issue that first correction notice through Coke compliance. Also, false or misleading information. They, it was required that they describe the illegal water source that will be used for irrigation of medical cannabis. On their application, it is stated that they would use well water to water the crop. However, there were reservoirs that had been created on site, and they were using pumps and pumping water from the reservoirs to irrigate the crop. Failure to meet fencing standards. Here is the damaged fence that was not in place. Failure to house generators. Here are the generators on site that were unhoused. Illegal camping. The first inspection, they found this trailer on site. It was hooked up and draining its waste discharge onto the ground. That trailer was removed, however, when they came back, there was a new one on site. So legal camping had continued, albeit in a different trailer. Water Board compliance. This is a picture that the officer took of the Water Board notice of violation on that date of inspection, signed by Mr. Kirkpatrick. And here is a copy of the Water Board's second notice of violation the following December, stating that they still had not complied with the orders of the first notice. Here's a picture of one of the reservoirs that was created. Here's another one, albeit this one is dry at the time. These firms that were created to hold the water requires a grading permit under county code that had never been applied for, and at this time still has not been applied for. To sum things up for this property, the application is denied due to inability to meet ordinance standards, including failure to notify of a new address or change in water use, fencing standards, generator housing, camping, failure to obtain grading permits for the dams, and failure to comply with the State Water Board. As a result, we recommend that you adopt Resolution 2018-010 to deny 2016-593 appeal and uphold Plank Director's determination to deny 2016-593.
Thank you. I have a question, Ethan, Julie. Because we're having the hearing, he's not present, his attorney's not present, do you think that we should give a phone call to him, letting him have an hour or two to get down here to finish this hearing?
That's in your discretion.
Is that something you guys would like to do, just so possibly it won't kick back again?
If we do that, boy, Scott will need to read.
No, he won't need to. We can actually just put this on hold, move to the next one, and then pick it up.
What if we call him and he doesn't answer?
We tried. It was just a suggestion.
I think it's a good idea.
It's another.
It's just another layer of protection from not being kicked back, and the supervisors can see that we made an effort to reach him.
Okay. And that would be for both four and five?
Both, for items four and five, be clear about that when you call him, please, so that the next time we don't have to go through this again.
On five, we have not yet decided on a motion to continue.
No, we have not.
So you would like me to call?
I would, and I polled the other commissioners, and they agree. Only because we have a court case on this type of situation, and we've had the supervisors kick back to us.
Oh, is Ethan here? Deputy County Counsel covers county. We're holding your Planning Commission hearing right now, and the Planning Commission wants to give an opportunity to show up for it. So I'm leaving your message to that effect. I'll try his home number, I guess. So I got a voicemail on the cell phone that identified itself as being that of Mr. Kirkpatrick, but the message that you heard me give, and his home number also, my commission.
Okay, thank you for doing that.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Okay.
I'd like to hear from Mr. Watts.
Okay, Mr. Watts.
I don't need to hear the whole story. I have a couple of questions. If you have a statement you want to make, that's great.
No, I think it's covered fairly well in Scott's presentation, but if you've got any more specific questions, I'll try and answer them.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, in our, in the resolution, it has the finding as far as the illegal camping, but we don't have a specific statement of evidence that it was there for more than fourteen days, the camping. And I would like your observations on that, Scott.
Yeah, I can't say that the, I mean, I didn't see the trailers there for fourteen days, but given the amount of, the amount of trash, the amount of other items, firewood lying around, it would suggest that the trailers were being used for much longer than fourteen days.
And that trash was not just agricultural-related stuff that wouldn't have to do with the, with somebody living on the property?
Yeah, general food, waste, and then other bits of junk and debris, car parts, that sort of thing.
And I get the feeling that you, you use the word trailer to encompass motorhomes, RVs, et cetera. A mobile living unit?
Yeah, I suppose, yeah, you could say that.
Okay. And then, this might be more a question for Scott. The evidence under that finding talks about the septic line was running into the ground and into Dry Creek, and that it was hooked, hooked up to, or the unit was hooked up to running water and a generator. Those are, are those specific violations of the code in other respects, other than the camping?
Yeah, it would be a violation. Discharging any wastewater onto the ground is a violation of county code.
And even if the, if the unit is there for less than fourteen days, hooking it, hooking it up to running water and having a generator, is that, that would be legal for the fourteen days, but not beyond that?
Yeah, regardless of the status of the trailer, any discharging of wastewater would be a violation.
Yeah, no, but I'm moving on from the discharge to the input of the running water and the use of a generator. That's just indications of permanence?
Yeah, it would suggest that it's been used for a while.
Yeah. Thank you. That's all I have.
So part of the denial is based on failure to meet screening, fencing, or security standards, but Mr. Watts has signed a letter in here stating that the northeast corner has been repaired on the fence. Junk and debris had been removed. So, Mr. Watts, were you signing off on the fencing as repaired in a timely manner, and?
No, I think the, that fencing that was repaired might be on the other one, 599.
We had one photograph that showed fence down.
I'm on appeal number five, number three.
So there, there was a, with the correction photos came a note stating that that was the case, not from Mr. Watts, but from the appellant?
It appears as if the Thomas signed off. Never mind. I get it, okay.
So that's, that's why it required them to go out to verify, because there was no photos verifying this note. Therefore, we need to do re-inspection to make sure, because the.
I thought that was Thomas signing off on it because of the stamped received Calaveras County Code.
Yeah.
I apologize.
They, they received the.
Okay.
So, Mr. Watts, is it clear to you that there was incomplete fencing while there was cultivation going on on this property?
Yes. In fact, I think in that picture, you can see the plants behind there.
All right, so does anybody else have any further questions?
Oh, I have one more. In your, your pictures, why, it shows a windmill, et cetera, so there was a groundwater well in addition to the reservoirs?
Yeah.
And was that well legal?
I don't think I've looked into it. I assume it is, given that the Water Board did their inspection as well.
Yeah, I'm just wondering about the well itself, whether it was legal or not. I, I understand.
I think so. I haven't checked with environmental health to see whether they have any problems with it.
So we don't know whether it was legal? I'm sorry, I didn't fully understand you.
I can tell you for certain, though. I would assume that they do have a permit for it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further questions for staff or code compliance? We're good? Okay, thank you. Is there anybody from public comment that would like to speak to this appeal? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing, bring it back to the commissioners for deliberation.
I certainly have no problem with the establishment of the violations. I will have suggestions as to the resolution.
Great, thank you.
I kinda have an issue that he didn't show up today. I don't see anything wrong with the recommendation. I don't see that he fixed anything. He didn't prove to us he fixed anything.
Okay. Based on that, let's go through some of your.
My, as far as the resolution goes, under finding, finding number two, about the camping, I think we need to add to the evidence that, well, actually, we have two different, two different units that has been, that have been seen by code compliance on this property. One was a motorhome. That second one, I don't know what it was.
It was something, that's for sure.
Okay.
There it is. Yeah, it's, it's on some sort of flatbed trailer. It's a, it's an interesting one.
Yeah, it kinda looks like it might be a factor-built shack. Anyhow, I think we need to add to that from the, add to that evidence statement, something along the lines of, from the items cited around the motorhome, it appeared that the motorhome and its successor were being used for more than fourteen days, continuous use.
Well, shouldn't the evidence state specifically that May inspection found this shack, is that right? Did I get that story right?
This is the final inspection in the end of September. So they had removed the mobile home and put this in its place.
So that's what we call a motorhome? I would think we'd.
Oh, the motorhome is that.
That's.
No, I mean, in the evidence, the word used is a motorhome.
Motorhome, and.
In September, so.
Why don't we have both, both the visit, both inspection dates on there? The, you know, on, on the first one and on the second one, living units were, mobile living units were found on the property.
Well, I think in the September evidence statement, it would say, Officer Tom Watts identified a motorhome and a.
It's not necessarily a shack. That is a vehicle. There is, there's a truck on the front of that, that's on top of a flatbed pickup truck.
Oh, it is a truck there, yeah.
Yeah, it is on a truck.
So that could, that could qualify as a.
Portable structure.
A motorhome, I mean, there it is.
I'll call it a mobile residence.
Yeah. But the point is, is that the September 6th, well, I guess now I'm, I'm questioning whether the first inspection had these problems with the, with the groundwater, the septic line and that sort of thing.
Would you like Mr. Watts to come back up?
I think, I think we're gonna have to get Mr. Watts back up. So on both of your inspections, were these conditions present, that the wastewater was running onto the ground?
So there were three inspections.
Oh, okay.
The first one was, it was brief, so I didn't see the rest of the property, so I didn't see any of these trailers the first time. The second inspection was when I saw the motorhome down by the creek. That's this one here, that was clearly draining wastewater onto the ground.
Okay.
On the third inspection, this trailer had been moved over to the adjacent property.
And we'll talk about that in the next.
Yeah.
But during that inspection, I also discovered this other mobile dwelling, whatever you want to call it.
And, and was there wastewater at that time, too?
I didn't see this one draining wastewater, but it appeared to be in use as a trailer type thing.
So, and the one with the true motorhome, that was the September 6th inspection?
Ah, yes.
Okay, well, then maybe we just keep, keep keep the, the statement of evidence just the way it is, and, but add that last sentence about the, the evidence that it was more than fourteen days.
Okay.
Was there any evidence that people were actually occupying that unit right there?
This one or the last?
No, the other one.
Just the general accumulation of waste and chairs and.
But there wasn't food, there wasn't clothes, there wasn't, you couldn't see anything like that that indicated that was actually being lived in?
There were some chairs.
No, just chairs, like dog feeding bowls.
So it could have been a doghouse.
Like fireworks stacked for campfires.
Yeah, I don't wanna reference that.
Yeah, it, I think, I think just sticking to the September 6th and the motorhome is great.
Okay. That's good.
Then, on finding three, that whole ordinance that we cite has to do with paperwork with the Water Quality Control Board. The evidence has to do with violations of state law. So it seems to me that we're, we're not claiming, at this point, a violation of the paperwork requirements of our ordinance, and we should shift the evidence about the site inspection down to under item five, finding five. Because that's, you know, other violations of state law. Because basically, the Water Control Board came out, said, you're. Because basically, the Water Control Board came out, said, "You're violating our laws." They didn't say, "You haven't filed the right paperwork." So, I just think we should shift that down to, to finding five and not have a finding about 17.95.165.4.
I'm okay with that.
Might require some misogynist...
Okay, before you move on from there, I just want to poll the other commissioners and make sure that you're all in agreement with that. Karen, you're looking like me.
So, why are you gonna remove it totally? That part I don't understand.
Well, we're not, we're not claiming any violation of the paperwork requirements having to do with the Water Quality Control Board. As far as, we don't, we don't know whether they filed the right papers, the notice of intent, et cetera, in time and et cetera. What we are claiming as violation is a violation of the actual water quality control statutes, state statutes, that they've got these substantial reservoirs out there.
That part I understand.
So, I want to keep that evidence in, but just move it under the finding that has to do with violations of state law.
Okay. Thank you for clarity on that.
Finally.
Sorry?
I said, finally, I can make it clear.
Well, I, it, I wasn't picking on you.
No.
I have before, but not this time.
Okay, I think, oh, and then on finding four, the last sentence, the registrant stated that well water would be used for irrigation, but instead was using water, I think we want to say, the registrant stated that well water would be used for irrigation, but in addition was using water from, and then cross out "and" and say illegal dams.
I agree.
Created on the parcel.
Good catch. That's it? Okay, does any other commissioners have notes on this? Do we agree to his recommended changes?
I'm not quite sure what we're specifically talking to on this item three versus four. Are you saying then that the first paragraph of number three is simply to throw out?
Yeah.
And then the evidence part of it could then slip down into four?
Shift, shift, no, shift down into five.
Into five.
Which is other violations of other state law.
Yeah, that makes sense. I'd agree with that.
Okay.
Chair, if I could make a suggestion, there's a lot of changes to this resolution, including adding findings that you made at the beginning of the hearing for reasons for not granting the continuance. And I wonder if we might allow Scott an opportunity to go ahead and fix that up, and then, in the meantime, hear the Alexander case, because Captain Macedo is here, the parties for Alexander are here, and then come back and return to Willie's Bud case, the second one.
I would be willing to do that, but I need to make sure that we're noting that we're gonna pick up four and five when we come back, because we're gonna be skipping number five as well.
Right.
Okay. That's good with me? And then maybe he calls you in the meantime.
Yeah.
Okay. So, we're gonna just put this on hold, not vote to do anything until we have the resolution corrected, and we'll pick it up in a little bit.
Yes.
Would you like to take a 10-minute break now before we start? Okay, great. We'll take a 10-minute break and be back at 10:05. Meeting back to order. Just for clarity where we ended off, we heard appeal number four, which, no, excuse me, yes, we heard appeal number four, presentation from staff. We are going back to do some amendments to the recommendation. So, we will be hearing four and five. We still have to go back to five. We have not heard that at all yet. We'll decide whether or not to do continuants on that as well. And we're gonna pick that up later this afternoon. And so, for now, we are going to move forward to item number six, which is appeal number And it looks like Ben, you're going to be the presenter on that one.
I am, and before I begin, I would just like to ask the commission if they'd be amenable to combining item six and seven, because the grounds and the individuals involved are identical.
Okay, so there is representation here for Mr. Alexander. Good morning.
My name is Brian Chavez.
Could you please come up to the mic so we can get you on the film, please?
Brian Chavez Ochoa, representing Mr. Alexander. I, I concur. I think it makes sense to combine the two. It's the same identical issue as to both.
Okay, great, thank you. So, polling the commissioners, are you willing to hear both at the same time?
Makes sense to me.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we'll hear them at the same time. We will have to vote separately. Okay?
All right. Understood.
Okay, thank you. So, you weren't here when I made my announcement this morning. We have a really long day ahead of us. We are sticking to 15 minutes on presentations, so you're up.
All right. Ben Diamond, Planner Trainee, presenting appeals 2016-152 and 2016-156 by Brian R. Chavez Ochoa on behalf of Daniel Benjamin Alexander, appealing the planning director's denial of commercial cannabis cultivation registration applications, 2016-152 and 2016-156. On June 14th, 2016, Daniel Alexander submitted a commercial medical cannabis cultivation registration application, number 152, for 6,134 square feet of mixed light cultivation located at 365 Old Prospector Trail in McCollum Hill. On June 15th, 2016, another application was submitted for 913 square feet of indoor cultivation located at 400 Old Prospector Trail, and these parcels are adjacent to each other. As an applicant for commercial cannabis cultivation registration, the appellant can submit it to a criminal background check pursuant to section 1795.165.15. The results of the background check revealed that the appellant possessed multiple convictions, which the sheriff found to be disqualifying due to being reasonably related to the qualifications, functions, responsibilities, and duties expected of an applicant for this type of registration. Therefore, the sheriff determined that the appellant had failed the background check. This information was compiled into a memo that was given to the planning director, who concurred with the sheriff's determination. Therefore, both 2016-152 and 2016-156 were denied pursuant to section 1795.165.15A. In the appeal letter, Mr. Chavez Ochoa claims that the two felony convictions that the appellant possessed were not reduced to misdemeanors on August 11th, as the sheriff claimed in her memo, and this claim is correct. Both were not reduced to misdemeanors. One was dismissed entirely, and the other was reduced to a misdemeanor. And secondly, that the applications couldn't be denied based solely on felonies which had been dismissed, but one felony was not dismissed and was simply reduced to a misdemeanor, which was determined to remain disqualified. And lastly, that the convictions that the appellant possessed didn't show historically that the appellant has no regard for the safety of the public and that they do not continue to disobey the law. However, the prior convictions do not necessarily need to show that the appellant is a danger to the public, just that the previous convictions are reasonably related to the type of application that they are seeking. And on that grounds, we believe that the conviction remains disqualified.
Okay.
I just have a couple additions. First, in Mr. Chavez Ochoa's letter, he argues that Mr. Alexander's character was part of the decision to reduce the misdemeanor, and that the judge's decision to reduce the felony to a misdemeanor indicates rehabilitation and, in general, good character. As far as I understand it, and I've only done one expungement in my career, and Mr. Chavez Ochoa has probably done many, the criteria is simply that a person has completed their probation period, and the purpose of it is just to allow them to not answer that they've committed a felony on job applications in the future, so they can enter the workforce. Additionally, he cites Business and Professions Code, section 480, stating that this should not be a proper basis for revocation of a license. However, Business and Professions Code 480 really just applies to the Department of Consumer Affairs and the, its various subdivisions, such as the Department of Real Estate and Licensing and various other state licenses, but does not apply to the county or the decisions made by the sheriff to, about whether or not the misdemeanor is grounds for denial of a background check. And I would just remind the commission that the burden is upon the appellant to show that the sheriff is mistaken in his discretion and decision to deny the application.
Thank you. I'm gonna actually see if any of the commissioners have any questions for staff?
No.
Nope?
No.
Okay.
I do.
Okay.
Quickly. Is this based on 165.15A or II? The two paragraphs, sub-paragraphs in the ordinance. One talks about the sheriff finding, and the other paragraph talks about the planning director. And the only reason I ask that is because later in the, in the resolution, and also in the preliminary language, it talks about the fact that the sheriff made these decisions, but then the planning director complied or agreed with it or concurred with it.
Okay, I, I don't have the code in front of me, but I think I can answer the question. In, in previous cases before this commission, the planning director had relied solely on determinations made by the sheriff and denied solely on that basis. However, he was, has been directed in previous rulings by this commission to exercise his own independent discretion based on the recommendations by the sheriff. And in this case, the planning director found that the reasoning of the sheriff was sound and that the adequate basis for denial had been provided to him. And so, I believe it would, it goes to the provision which deals with the sheriff making a determination that a conviction is reasonably related to the duties of a cannabis cultivator. Thank you.
If there's no further questions, we'll go to the appellant's representation for, we're ready for you.
Excuse me, where is, where will we have the sheriff's presentation?
Do you want, Captain, do you want to come now, or do you want to wait until afterwards?
It would be my, my preference, and I think it would be beneficial if I spoke after.
Okay, thank you. Okay?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Brian Chavez Ochoa. My client, Mr. Alexander, is here in, in the room with us as well. If the commission has had an opportunity to read the appeal letter that we submitted as to both matters, I'm not gonna go through that again. There's no point in wasting the time. That's essentially our position. Just to add to that, and in response to County Council about expungements, the process is, is a little bit more complicated than what he suggests. In order to apply for an expulsion, you have to meet certain criteria. You file that petition with the Superior Court in which you sustained or suffered the conviction. The court, a copy is sent to the court, a copy is also sent to the District Attorney's Office. The District Attorney's Office does an investigation as to the case, any future violations subsequent to the conviction, such as any violations of probation, whether or not that individual had complied with all the terms and conditions of probation, and it had, in fact, paid all their fines. It's not an automatic thing. The DA can object, and furthermore, the court, on its own discretion, can not grant it. There's two processes. One is under Penal Code, section 17B. The other one is, is for, if it's a misdemeanor, it'd be an expungement. Interestingly enough, these, some of these charges that were involved under Prop 47 would now be misdemeanors today. But, but nonetheless, so you file the petition with the court. The court, on its own discretion, looks at the case, also determines whether or not there's been any violations of probation. Now, if there's been violations of probation, or if the defendant failed to comply with his terms and conditions of probation, or failed to pay any fines or restitution, then the court denies it. The District Attorney can come in and argue against it as well. And then, based on that argument, the District, the court can make a decision whether to grant it or to deny it. Now, in, in all these instances that I've cited in our letter, and in relevant to both cases, they were all granted. There was no objection by the District Attorney's Office, and it was, it was granted by the Superior Court in those instances. Now, 480, by analogy, Business and Provision, Business and Professions Code, section 480, does apply, as suggested by County Council, but by analogy, I think it applies to this and will one day apply to the licensing requirements of cannabis. Because cannabis has just now been made legal as of January 1, recreational. Of course, there's been issues relevant to medical marijuana. But I think for, whether it's 480 or another section of, of Business and Professions Code, I think it's going to apply. The, the spirit of that code section is, is there has to be more than just the conviction itself to rely upon. So, I'm not here to cast any aspersions against the sheriff or the sheriff's office. They do an excellent job, especially with the, the conditions that they're faced with. I'm only here to suggest that perhaps the sheriff, the sheriff's reliance on the expungement process as, as well as his reasoning may have been misplaced. The suggestion that the conduct from 2005, 2006 denotes that my client has no regard for the public safety. Those convictions, not only have they been expunged and taken care of, but it's what we call antique or old. And if we were in a court of law, which we are not, but if we were, the court couldn't consider those because they're too old. There'd be a motion to eliminate and to keep that from being considered. Our, our position is simply this. Mr. Alexander has been a resident of this community for a very, very long time. He didn't come in after the board of supervisors decided that was gonna be okay to grow commercial marijuana. Before that, he was a, a member of this community, and he intends to remain a member of this community. He's raising his three children here. So, this is not somebody that just flew in overnight and decided to buy a parcel and grow some marijuana. This is a gentleman who's been here for quite some time. Did he make some mistakes in the past? Absolutely. But he's atoned for those mistakes, and that's what we'd like the, the commission to consider.
I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Only one of the convictions was expunged, right?
Correct. The other one was reduced from a felony to a misdemeanor. The court has the discretion to either expunge or reduce, and in some instances, depending on the charge, they can only reduce it to a misdemeanor. So, in, in those instances, either by judicial discretion or by the, the charge itself, it's, it's a misdemeanor.
Then, Penal Code, section 1203.4.
Yes, sir.
A1.
Right.
Which deals with the expungement.
Correct.
Although it does say, "He or she shall thereafter be released from all penalties and disabilities resulting from the offense," as far as the expungement. Later on, it says that the order shall state, and the probationer shall be informed, that the order does not relieve him or her of the obligation to disclose the conviction in response to any direct question contained in any questionnaire or application for public office for licensure by any state or local agency or another instance. So, you agree that your, your client was required to state these convictions?
Not only was he required, but he did, in fact, disclose. He, he, this was not an omission of failing to disclose the convictions.
I understand.
And even though, even though the matter's expunged, for example, if, if the individual were to apply to be a police officer, or law enforcement, or many government positions, or even the military, it's still subject to disclosure and certainly subject to a background investigation.
And, and in another part of this way, if, if he were to be charged with another felony somewhere down the line, this, that felony could be charged as a, as a prior also, right?
It, it depends on the felony, but it, it, and for purposes of a prior, it depends on what offense has been alleged.
Anyhow, that, we don't need to get into that one.
And not only that, but there's still certain, there's still certain prohibitions as to a felony conviction. For instance, initially, you can't vote. By way, manner of the expungement, that right is returned to you. You can't possess or own or purchase any firearms. That prohibition remains in effect forever until and unless you file a certificate of rehabilitation. rehabilitation and obtain a governor's pardon.
Well, I guess what sticks in my mind is that if he were required to disclose this expunged felony on the form for purposes of licensure by a local agency, you're still claiming that that conviction cannot be used as a ground for denying the license?
I'm not saying it can't be used. Obviously, the sheriff considered that, and that was the basis of his denial. I think what this commission needs to do is take a more open or broader approach to that and look at as the totality of the circumstances, not just as one instance.
So you're, you're saying, yes, it can be considered.
Without a doubt.
But, but the court has, has done things that might indicate that maybe we ought to take a similar approach that the court has done, even though we're not bound to.
Exactly.
Is that fair?
No, no, I think that's fair, sir, because the bottom line is simply this. If the judge didn't feel that Mr. Alexander had been rehabilitated from that conviction, he didn't have to grant the petition. He could have denied it. And I can tell you, counsel's right. I've done more than a couple. I do a lot of these, and I travel all over the state to do it. And I can tell you, without any reservation, there have been petitions that we have filed in various jurisdictions that have been denied.
I guess the only other thing I'm wondering about, and before we get to the sheriff, is whether, and I'm not the one to go through the waiver thing, but should we go through whether his client waives what the offenses were? I mean, waives our knowing exactly.
Understood.
If we're, if we're going to go into what the criminal activity was, then yes, we would need to get a waiver. At this point, I think what we're doing is deciding whether or not expulsion and reduced to misdemeanor is what we're basing these charges on. But if we feel that we need to go into further criminal, we would have to get a waiver from your client to let us discuss his arrest.
And if that's the case, then I'll have Mr. Alexander come up and address your questions.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Okay. So I think he would like to have Mr. Alexander come up and see if he's willing to waive his rights to discuss his criminal activity.
Absolutely.
Okay. Good morning.
Good morning.
Can you state your name, please?
Daniel Benjamin Alexander.
Thank you. Okay. So you understand that we're here today talking about your criminal history, and in order for us to be able to do that, we would need you to waive your rights for us to have that discussion with the captain or your representation here.
Yes.
It's waiving privacy rights.
Yes.
Okay. All right. And you're agreeing to waive your rights to discuss those issues?
Yes, I do.
Thank you very much. Okay. Just one more thing. It is a recorded event, so it is public for everybody to see. Okay?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. All right. So I think at this point, we would like to bring up Captain Macedo. We will also come back to you to be able to rebut anything that's been discussed here after.
Madam Chairperson, I have a couple of questions for counsel.
Great, okay.
Yes, sir.
With respect to Business and Profession Code 480, which you quoted in your brief, Mr. Turner, representing the Planning Department, has made the point that that doesn't apply to registration under this county ordinance. Do you agree with that?
No, I agree. I think it applies by analogy, but not necessarily by ordinance.
Well, actually, there's a, there's a definition of license in the Business and Professions Code, Section 23.7. Are you familiar with that?
I am.
And that makes it pretty clear that that code section applies only to business or profession regulated by that code.
I agree.
And so legally, putting aside the by analogy point.
Right.
It's perfectly proper for the sheriff and the planning director to consider the dismissed conviction, as well as the one that was reduced, correct?
And we're not arguing otherwise.
Okay, thank you.
We're simply saying that by analogy, it should not be considered as a sole factor, that, that, as I suggested earlier, it should be based on a totality of the circumstances, rather than on one event.
But here we have two events.
Well, that's true. But I think you can take into consideration the rehabilitation aspect of it as well. Because the court, the court did.
I understand.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is there any further questions?
Not at this point.
Not, not at this point.
Let me ask one before we go up here. Sorry. The two convictions I see now that this has been waived, and in your letter of December 14th, you specifically list them as a 2005 conviction in December for possessing a dangerous weapon, and then about one year later, December of '06, possessing, 11/358, possessing a narcotic or controlled substance. Are those the only two convictions that are involved here?
I'll let you address that.
Yes.
And you haven't had any convictions since '06?
No.
That's all right.
I'm 40 now, and I was in my early twenties.
I'm sorry, can you speak into the microphone?
Yeah, I'm 40 years old now. These were in my early twenties, these convictions.
Okay. Thank you. That's it? Okay, we'll go ahead and hear from, thank you.
Thank you.
Captain Jim Macedo, representing the sheriff's office. So the sheriff's office submitted a denial letter based upon the criminal history background of Mr. Alexander. In summary, when we reviewed the background, we did note that there was a reduction in the convictions. And I'd like to address something probably right up front, and if you don't listen to anything else I say today, I would ask that you listen to this. There is a big difference between a criminal charge being reduced versus being re-designated as a separate charge, and then a humongous difference between being expunged, sealed, and destroyed. When something is expunged, sealed, and destroyed, it no longer exists. Therefore, you cannot utilize that in a background per se, which is what we are doing here today. That is not what the appellant did. The criminal convictions remain on his record for a reason, and that is so that those can be accessed, if they are needed to be accessed, for a lot of the items that were mentioned by, by Mr. Chavez of Choa. So not only do we review those convictions, we do take into account if they are reduced, but we also look at the additional charges for which the appellant was arrested for, because, as I've mentioned to the commission before, charges are often reduced. Some charges are dropped in order to obtain a plea on other charges. So we do, in fact, take a look at the totality of the person as best we can. We look, we do look at other arrests, other arrests that where the applicant is not convicted. And we try to dismiss those arrests where the applicant was not necessarily charged. However, I do want to make some notes that are in direct conflict with what the appellant just testified to. I do show a 1999 arrest for misdemeanor spousal battery. And by my, my records here that I'm looking at, I show three probation violations, rearrests, and revocations based upon that arrest. There were two other charges that were concurrent with that case that were dismissed. In addition, as it relates to the background application, in 2011, I show an arrest out of Oakland, California, and it's 550, subsection A, subsection 1 of the penal code, present false claim or false pay. Also, 550, subsection B, subsection 1, false insurance information for payment. And they show that as a misdemeanor conviction. It says it was later dismissed. Now, as it relates to that specific charge, while that may seem small and innocuous, when we have applications and we have people who are maintaining and distributing controlled substances whereby they're required to report that, report specifics to what they're doing, not only to us in the background process, but as it relates to items such as track and trace, the amount of marijuana cultivated, the canopy, we want people that are honest. We do not want people that have been found to have either perjured themselves or presented or provided others with false documents. So that, even though the sheriff did not address that specifically, that was also specifically noted in the background examination for, for this appellant. Lastly, just one other note as it relates to sealing and expunging records. The sheriff's office deals with those as well. When someone wishes to have their criminal history sealed and destroyed, you did hear part, part of that story. The original arresting law enforcement agency also has submitted a document that they would have to sign off on and agree to prior to the arrest being sealed and destroyed, and including the conviction. I deal with those specifically in the sheriff's office, and I can tell you that if we make a false arrest, or if we find out someone was arrested under false pretenses, or somebody makes a malicious allegation that later turns out to be false, you know, we, that is an extreme case. However, that, that is the exact type of arrest where you would want to seal and destroy that record because that person was either wrongfully arrested for whatever reason. However, in closing, I understand what you're dealing with today is the fact that somebody had multiple arrests, and those charges were later reduced and/or dismissed. The problem is, when you look at the totality of the appellant's criminal history as it relates to arrests, convictions, whether they are reduced or not, the Calaveras County Sheriff's Office has a duty to protect the public as it relates to these background processes in each individual county. And as it relates to this particular case through our urgency ordinance, we have the right to look at the totality of the circumstances and recommend approval or denial based upon a background. And that is specific to the county, and that is what we did here today.
Now, I have a question. The ordinance speaks to, if the sheriff finds that the applicant for the cultivation site has been convicted of any felony or misdemeanor he deems to be reasonably related to the qualifications, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I don't see anything in there about arrests or charges that were later dismissed. It appears that the ordinance is limited, the sheriff's decision is limited to convictions. I guess I'll turn that into a question.
Sure.
Are you limited to convictions?
Yes, yes, we are, but we have the ability to take an overall look at what has occurred. Just because someone was convicted for one crime, yet they were arrested for three separate charges, it allows us the ability to look at the report and the totality of what had occurred. We do dismiss a lot of the information if it does not deal specifically with a conviction. However, however, I do want you, I do want to be clear that when we are reviewing these background packets, there is information within the reports, there is information within the pleadings that the planning commission is not privy to. And as a decider of the case or a decider of the fact, if I think there is something pertinent to the commission that is not directly tied to the conviction, I will try and bring that to your attention.
But I don't see where the ordinance provides that as, as part of the ground.
So case, case in point, Mr. Ladish. Today, you were, you received testimony that there were only two convictions. And I went into a third separate conviction dealing with the, the insurance, the fraudulent submittal of what sounds like payment for insurance.
That was the 1999 one?
No.
That was 2011.
No, 2005. There was a conviction there. And the conviction on paper, if I just explain that to you, paints one picture. But I went ahead and I wanted to further describe why that would be important to the sheriff's office as it relates to the honest truthfulness of completing and filling out documents. So it is the surrounding facts of the case that I think may be beneficial to the commission, and certain, at times, it may be beneficial to the appellant. But I, what I don't want to do is walk away from here with what I believe, and this is a criminal court term, I think it's sculpatory, you know, evidence that may be beneficial to the, to the planning commission.
And could you go through the, the two convictions that we are considering here and explain to us?
Would you tell me which two convictions? Because there is a discrepancy between what the appellant has testified to and what I show in my, my documents.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we only had two before us.
No.
Okay. I just, I think it would help our record to, to, to understand the sheriff's reasoning as to how these, these, the convictions that you base your findings on, how they affect the, the proper.
Qualifications.
Licensing of the, of this.
Okay. I show a mis, I show a misdemeanor conviction dated February 9th, 2009, for battery on a cohabitant or spouse. I show probation being terminated in 2000.
Excuse me. 1999, you told us earlier.
Okay, I'm, I'm, who told you 1999?
I wrote it down when you said, you said 1999.
You said 1999 on the domestic.
Bear with me, bear with me.
Is it 2009?
So there's differences between the dates of arrest and the dates of convictions.
Yeah, this is a 10-year difference, so. 2009.
No, you said 1999, and I said, did I say 2010? It should be 2000.
Okay, so the first one, when you were talking, you said 1999 misdemeanor spousal, and then you said 2011 in Oakland, 550, false claims. I think.
And my question has to do with conviction, so if you could stick to the conviction.
Correct. Okay. On February 9th, 2000, I show a misdemeanor, okay, battery on a cohabitant or spouse. The original disposition was conviction. On September 27th, 2000, I show that probation was terminated. On March 3rd, 2017, I show that the conviction was dismissed per 1203.4 PC. On July 10th, 2001, I show a felony conviction. There's two separate cases for planting or cultivating marijuana or hashish. On March 3rd, 2017, I see that that conviction was dismissed per 1203.4 of the penal code. On May 26th, 2005, I show a, an additional felony with one court case for possession or manufacturing or sales of a dangerous weapon. In 2006, the.
That was a, I'm sorry, and you're now gonna get to the conviction? Okay.
2006, I show a sentence modification on February of 2006, a subsequent sentence modification in December of 2006. I show on August 11th, 2016, that was reduced to a misdemeanor. And then on March of 2017, that was dismissed. Not expunged, not sealed, destroyed, dismissed.
Okay. Go ahead.
Would you like me to continue?
Yes, I would, please.
Okay. On December 11th, 2006, I show an additional felony of possession of a narcotic or controlled substance. I show a conviction. On August 11th, 2016, I show that reduced to a misdemeanor. Again, not dismissed, not expunged. On May 25th, 2011, I show a misdemeanor warrant for the code sections 550, subsection B, subsection 1, for false insurance information for pay. I show that was also convicted. And then on September 26th, 2016, I show that the conviction was dismissed per 1203.4 PC. In addition to that, I show other arrests that were not convictions, okay? I will not go into those with one exception. There was a discussion today about whether the successful completion of probation occurred and whether there were any violations. I heard. completion of probation occurred and whether there were any violations. I heard some conflicting testimony. According to my records, I see three subsequent dates where probation was violated on the spousal battery, and there was a rearrest and revocation proceeding.
You may feel this is self-evident, but would you like to make any statement as to why you find these convictions to be reasonably related to the qualifications?
I believe I already did that with the failing to pay. When it comes to cultivation of marijuana, we obviously do not want people possessing, selling, or maintaining a dangerous weapon that's not immediately recognizable as a weapon. 1202 of the penal code isn't necessarily possession of a handgun. It's usually some sort of improvised weapon that is not always immediately recognizable as a weapon. Obviously, the controlled substance case being a narcotic and the marijuana cultivation shows a past behavior on the applicant that he was willing to violate the laws associated with controlled substances previously, and I think I will submit it on that.
So, in looking at the dates that you read off, the background application, did you find that it was complete with all of the arrests that you read off?
The background, I didn't find any inaccuracies or dishonesty. What the applicant did in the background packet is he just said, please review the attached criminal history, and he attached his own criminal history. However, the criminal history that he attached did not include the entirety of what I have before me, but I did not find where the appellant intentionally withheld any information from us.
Okay, and then the dismissal that was completed, those were done after background submission?
Correct.
Because those were done in late '16 and '17. They weren't done pre-background application, correct? That's kind of the way I wrote the dates down?
Yeah, I would have to, I would have to look back at the date of his application.
Well, everything had to be submitted by June 30th, and I think they had to come to your department within...
In 2016, I believe.
Okay. Okay, and so the reason that they would have been able to go back in and have those reduced was because of Prop 47 and 57? Is that a correct statement?
I have no clue why the appellant would want to get those reduced. It could have been for, in order to cultivate marijuana, it could have been, you know, people decide to work on their criminal history for a variety of reasons. I'd be speculating.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further questions for Captain Macedo? No? Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate you coming.
Sure.
I'm gonna, yeah, I think I'm gonna go to public comment. Is there anybody that has any comment on this particular appeal? And it's actually both appeals. We're hearing both of them, numbers 152 and 156. Okay, seeing nobody coming to the mic, I'm gonna close the public comment. I'm going to go to, do you see if you have anything you want to rebuttal on anything that was said here today?
I have nothing further to add.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chavez, would you like to come up, please?
Just to enlighten the commission, you asked the question as to why he did what he did as far as seeking the dismissals and the reduction. It's Mr. Alexander's intention of seeking the certificate of rehabilitation and then applying for a governor's pardon. Governor Brown actually did pardons on Easter and Christmas. We don't know what the new governor's gonna do, but nonetheless, we believe that he'll qualify both under the certificate of rehabilitation, and then we'll submit the pardon. There's no guarantee we'll get a pardon, but that's what he wants to do. Relevant to, and I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna suggest Captain Macedo did or did not understand my point. My point is simply this, and to address your question about Prop 47, Prop 57, that has nothing to do with what happened here.
Okay, because you indicated earlier that you could get them reduced based on that. That's where my question came from.
Right, well, under Prop 47, any felony conviction for controlled substance is now a misdemeanor.
Okay, so that's why I asked the question, because you referenced it.
That's not what happened here.
Okay.
What happened here was, it was our desire, or my client's desire, to reduce and/or dismiss. Expungement is just a term that encompasses all that proceeding. Captain Macedo was dealing with what is actually sealed. We didn't move to seal any of these convictions. It's still on his DOJ record, and obviously, the sheriff's department has access to other than DOJ. The submission, when Mr. Alexander did his background, he submitted his DOJ record that he obtained directly from Department of Justice. The sheriff's department, of course, their records are gonna be more thorough, more succinct, rather than what my client obtained from Department of Justice. The other thing that the commission has to understand is that lots of individuals are arrested and booked into jail on various crimes that are never charged. There's also a process called stacking by the district attorney's office, in which they'll stack maybe eight or nine or 10 counts against an individual with the hope that that person will plead to a lesser charge or to one or two counts and have the remaining counts dismissed. Just because you're charged with it doesn't mean you're guilty of it. The only one that this commission can take into consideration as far as guilt was those that he was convicted, either, you know, by plea or whatever the process may be. Criminal justice system relies on the plea agreement to keep the cases moving, because if defense, myself as a defense attorney and other defense attorneys, if we were to decide, no, we're not gonna plea any cases, and we're gonna take everything to trial, I can tell you, and withdraw time waivers, so you have to get your felony cases and misdemeanor cases to court in a very brief period of time. We're gonna overload the system. So plea agreements play a vital role in our criminal justice system. So, that being said, these other charges that the captain spoke of, whether they happen or not, I don't believe it's appropriate to consider. And the ordinance, as Mr. Ladish pointed out, the vice chair pointed out, says you only can apply it for convictions. I think it's a bit of an overreach to consider the charge. I understand why they do it. They're looking at his moral character, his background, so.
So, I'm sorry, you wanna go first?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. I thought I heard that there was, in addition to the controlled substance conviction and the weapons conviction, a separate conviction for assault and battery spousal type?
It was spousal on a cohabitant, and that was dismissed.
Was there a conviction?
There was a conviction, yes, sir.
But it was later dismissed under 1203.4?
Correct.
And then there was also a conviction in 2011 on a false insurance claim?
Yeah, I think it was penal code section 550, or it may be, it was code section 550. And I, to be honest with you, right now, I can't remember if that's the insurance code or if that's the penal code, but nonetheless, that was also as a misdemeanor, and that was dismissed as well.
But it was a conviction and then dismissed later?
Yes, sir.
Just like the controlled substance one, I guess?
That's correct. And so the commission knows, the dangerous weapon, it was a sap. It wasn't a firearm, it was a sap.
It was a what?
A New York sap.
I don't know what that is.
It's like a small billy club, only it's weight, there's a handle, and typically, it's weighted at the end.
Okay.
Used to call them blackjacks?
Yes, sir. That's it.
Okay. Now, is there any reason why this commission can't consider all four of these convictions?
Oh, no, no. I think the commission has to consider it, all of it. And I think that the commission has to consider as well what Mr. Alexander has done in rectifying it.
Now, when the sheriff is making his determination, his findings, and the planning director deciding whether to concur or not, and they have to decide whether the conviction is reasonably related to the qualifications, functions, responsibilities, or duties expected of the registrant, do you believe that they would be entitled to consider arrests that did not result in convictions and making the reasonable relationship determination?
The ordinance would suggest otherwise. The ordinance suggests convictions, not arrests. I think the ordinance could have just as easily been drafted to include arrests in that consideration. And so I think if, I understand why they do it, but I think if you're, you're overreaching to consider something the ordinance didn't mandate.
If you had other information about a registrant that was not an arrest, but it was information that would suggest that the convictions that do exist were reasonably related to the applicant's ability to carry out his responsibility and so forth, could you consider that? Or are you strictly limited to the face of the convictions?
No, I don't think you're, I don't think you're strictly limited to the face of the convictions. I think you are limited to what the ordinance allows. And, I mean, I'd be hard pressed to come up with an example of something that might, would be appropriate to consider that wasn't necessarily articulated in the ordinance. I'm not suggesting that. I'm not telling, I'm not saying that they have to come to this discretion or decision with blinders on. I think it has to be an open decision, and I think it has to be, obviously, in the best interest of the public, because that's what this is all about.
So, just as if the sheriff and the planning department can consider evidence of rehabilitation post-conviction, they could consider evidence that suggests that there was no rehabilitation?
Well, if the commission finds there is no rehabilitation, I think it flies in the face of what the superior court already found, and what the district attorney's office in more than one county chose not to object to.
But of course, those efforts by the DA and the court deal with whether the applicant is a continuing risk to public safety or not, whereas the sheriff's determination and the planning director's determination ties directly to the qualifications expected of somebody to have a marijuana license. Those are different, aren't they?
Yeah, but I think you mistake what the court and what the district attorney's office refers to. They look at, they look at the case from post-conviction, and whether or not the defendant complied with what was required after the fact, and then they make a determination based on that. Do they take public safety into account? Of course they do. I mean, any court and any district attorney's gonna do that. And as I stated earlier, I've had other cases where they've been denied on specifically those grounds. I think, I think that while it's important to look at those factors as you've articulated, I think it's equally important to look at the other ones as well.
So, just a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
So he signed a sworn statement that he was growing under the urgency ordinance before May of 2016?
Yes, ma'am, that's my understanding.
Okay, and he was arrested and convicted on manufacturing and cultivation previous to that? And...
You know, that I have to ask, Mr. Alexander, can you step forward? I, that, I can't answer that question.
Well, to me, it says there's no rehabilitation if you were arrested for it, but you were continuing to do it, and you signed a sworn statement that you were doing it.
Okay, so ask your question again.
Okay. Were you arrested for manufacturing and cultivation?
Early 2000, I believe, 2002, somewhere around there.
Thank you.
Plus or minus a year.
Okay. So, you still cultivated after that?
Well, under either the medical marijuana law or either under the emergency, urgency ordinance.
Okay.
He was in strict compliance with both. I mean, there's never been any suggestion...
Well, you can be under strict compliance, but you have an arrest for that, and you're sitting here talking to me about rehabilitation. If you're being rehabilitated for something that you were convicted of or arrested for, but you're continuing to do it, I don't see rehabilitation existing.
But I think you're confusing rehabilitation with lawful activity. Unfortunately, we live in a world today, at least in this state and many others, that recognize it's lawful to participate in recreational marijuana. Okay, now, I don't happen to believe that that's the case, and I'm certainly not an advocate for it. But not only can you smoke recreationally, you can also grow recreationally. Not only that, but under the proper circumstance...
Not back in 2016 when he signed the papers?
I'm talking about present day. I'm not talking about 2000...
Okay, well, I'm talking about, I'm talking about when he applied under the urgency ordinance.
Which was, I think, 2016.
And when we were ruling on, did he pass the background check?
Right.
At that point in time, nothing was dismissed, nothing was expunged, nothing was...
Whether it was or wasn't, that doesn't matter.
We're ruling on the date that he applied, and if he passed the background check. You're trying to bring me forward to January of 2017, which wasn't part of this ruling for me. It's when he applied...
I'm not bringing you to January 2017. Where'd you get that?
You just said, I'm talking current day law. That would be today's law.
No, ma'am, I was referring to, as of January 1, 2018, it is now lawful to smoke marijuana recreationally in the state.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying. And so, whether or not he grew under the medical marijuana laws that made it lawful, or whether or not he grew under the urgency ordinance which made it lawful, he was still in compliance with that. That's got nothing to do with rehabilitation. Rehabilitation simply has to be considered by what his past history is from 2011 forward. 2011 was an insurance claim that has nothing to do with growing marijuana. The only other issue with growing marijuana prior to that was in 2002, which was 16 years ago. That's what I'm saying. You can't, you cannot mix rehabilitation with what he's done if he's done it lawfully. And unfortunately, now in this state, they can do it lawfully.
Possibly. And I...
Well, I don't know how you argue against Prop 64.
I'm arguing against my, I'm not gonna argue Prop 64. I'm arguing against the urgency ordinance that was signed in my county and what the requirements were that you had to abide by to pass and background checks.
And he abided by that. He didn't mislead...
And background checks.
He didn't mislead the sheriff's department in any fashion when he failed a background investigation.
Thank you for that, by the way, because most of them did. You did a good job on that.
Yeah, no, he, I've known Mr. Alexander for a very long time now, and if he's nothing, he's honest. He may have made mistakes, he's done things he shouldn't have done, but he's honest. And he would never intentionally mislead the sheriff's department when it came to the background investigation.
Go ahead.
I think what the chairperson was getting at is this, that he had a prior conviction for growing marijuana when he shouldn't have, correct?
Was that in 2002?
2002, I did not have one memory.
Okay. And then, and then, and now he's applied for registration of the urgency ordinance. To do that, to seek a registration of the urgency ordinance, you have to prove that you were, you graded or cultivated prior to May 10th, 2016.
Yeah, that you were in the prior or otherwise.
Prior to May 10th of 2016, this county did not have any ordinance that permitted the growing of marijuana for any purpose.
Well, that I would disagree with, because medical marijuana was allowed, as long as you kept it with, you had your script or your prescription for it, and as long as you kept it under 99 plants, it was lawful to grow. And many, many growers were engaging in just that activity. We're not talking about in excess of 99 plants, we're talking 99 and less. All the urgency ordinance did was allow people from wherever to come in here and grow it commercially in anticipation of 2018. I mean, I'm not gonna speak for the board supervisors, because I think it was a horrible decision. But that being said, my point is this, is you've always, since the medical marijuana law went into effect, if you had your 215 card, and if you had your prescription, you could lawfully grow up to 99 plants, no matter where. And that's been ongoing in Calaveras County for a very long time.
Now, was his, his application was for indoor cultivation, is that correct?
Yes, well, he had an outdoor and an indoor.
Was he, was that for commercial, is the application for a commercial grow?
Yes, sir.
So he has to show that he was, had a commercial grow prior to May 10th of 2016 to qualify?
He just had to show that he was growing. He just had to show that he was growing. And under the medical marijuana law, he was growing.
But I think...
He had to show he was growing commercially.
Commercially, well...
And the square footage had to be quite large, which would have been probably more than 99 plants, depending on what his square, what is his square... depending on what his square, what is his square footage? Is it 22,000 square feet?
No, no, ma'am, it's very small.
What is?
The indoor garage is the actual, the garage itself is 900 square feet.
Okay.
In that garage, I'm only using like 340 square feet.
So are you growing outdoors well with a mixed use license?
Um, I, last year I was, yes.
Okay. But were you prior to May?
Prior to May, yes, I was as well.
So it's more than just 300 square feet in the garage? You were also growing commercially outside?
Under mixed light, yes.
How much, how much square footage outside?
Six, 6,000 and something square feet.
Yeah, it's kind of tough for me to gauge 99 plants on that, but that's okay. Does there any other questions?
No.
No? Okay. Seeing none, and then did you have anything further you wanted to add to that for closing statements?
No, ma'am, I don't. I just, I want to thank the commission for allowing us the time to appear before you today.
Thank you, we appreciate that. Okay, so I will be closing the hearing and bringing it back for deliberation. If we can, would you like to start?
Sure.
Something new? Okay.
I, I do appreciate the honesty of the applicant, appellant, in his submission to the sheriff. However, I do think the sheriff has presented convictions that are reasonably related to the qualifications, functions, responsibilities, or duties expected of the applicant. I would base my vote, which I intend to vote to deny the appeal, solely on the convictions as described by the sheriff's office and, and the sheriff's explanation of how they are reasonably related, without considering anything other than the convictions themselves.
I agree with him, and we have voted before on somebody else, I believe more than once, for the same thing. Not necessarily the same charges, but the sheriff has decided that they were not, they didn't want to approve them for growing because of their past convictions.
And, excuse me, I'm going to elaborate on something I forgot to say. I'm not deciding today whether or not we could consider broader things such as arrests or charges, et cetera. I'm just saying that the record is sufficient that based on the convictions themselves, that the sheriff was acting within his discretion.
I agree with most of what has been said. The one issue I do have, though, is the applicant, I didn't seem to remember his 2011 conviction, which was, was it dismissed or reduced? I think it was dismissed in 2016. So at least one situation didn't quite tell the whole story. But in general, I do have to support the sheriff's determination that the records, his criminal record does show convictions that were reasonably related to the cultivation. So I would have to go along with the denial.
I'm, I'm prepared to deny the appeal.
Okay. I'm also prepared to deny based on the planning director's denial as well. So, and just for clarity purpose, the sheriff is just making a recommendation. The denial came through the planning director, and I just want to make sure we have that on record. So I will go to Ben to read the recommendation. Are there going to be any changes to the resolution?
No, since it just relies upon multiple convictions, I'm happy with the way it is.
All right, so you can go ahead and read.
Staff recommends that the planning commission adopt Resolution 2018-015, thus denying appeal 2016-152, thereby upholding the planning director's determination to deny-
Excuse me?
Mr. Alexander, we have, there's the second, also the second hearing that we haven't voted or ruled on, and we'll be doing that just before you leave. But based on the first appeal, we haven't voted yet, and the second appeal, I just want to make sure you know you have 14 days to appeal this to the planning department, to go to the board of supervisors. And I know your attorney left before then, and he probably already knows that, but I want to make sure that you have the right to appeal it to the supervisors, depending on what our vote is.
It's 15 days.
15 days, excuse me. Thank you. Okay, sorry.
Thanks.
Thereby upholding the planning director's determination to deny application 2016-152.
Okay?
So moved.
My second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? It's by a bow. Okay, and just for the record, he's left, we've voted. I want to make sure that it goes into the record that he has 15 days to appeal this to the planning department, to the board of supervisors. And then we will now take up number 156. So unless anybody has any, because we heard the two together, but we're voting separately, does anybody have any comments they would like to make?
No.
Okay, how about from the public? Does anybody from the public want to comment on this? Okay, then we'll close the public hearing, bring it back, and we'll take the recommendation, please.
Staff recommends that the planning commission adopt Resolution 2018-016, thus denying appeal 2016-156, thereby upholding the planning director's determination to deny application 2016-156.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries by vote. Again, he has 15 days to appeal this to the planning department or to the board of supervisors. Okay. So my question would be, are you ready to go back to item number four of 2016-593 on Kirkpatrick to finish up on that one? Okay? Did we get a new copy of the resolution on that?
Yes.
One, thank you, Kelly, sorry. Let it be noted that Commissioner Wooster has left the room because he has rescused himself from this hearing and also the following one, number five.
And I do have some more information that may be pertinent to, to this. I was recently given these projects. I did not work on them in the past, and I was not aware of the history of them. These two projects have not been continued in the past.
Okay.
So I don't know if that would change your, your decision on whether or not to continue them at this hearing, but I want you to know that.
Did we hear from him via the phone call that we left or message? Has he checked in with the planning department?
No, I, I missed one call during the period, and I checked, but Scott, it was not his phone number. So, but another man has entered the room. Excuse me, sorry, are you, are you Mr. Kirkpatrick?
No.
So.
Okay, so he didn't ask for a continuance before, but he was still late asking for a continuance, correct?
Correct. I, I did not receive any, I received a phone call on Tuesday, so prior, or after the 72-hour deadline.
Why did we think he asked for a continuance?
I think I caused that confusion, because I was, I was thinking Mr. Gibowitz had gotten a continuance before. So I, I might have caused that, but thank you very much for clarifying it, so we get the record straight.
So before we move on any further, I would like to poll the commissioners to see if anybody's decision has changed. Do you want to still rule on this, or do you want to continue?
Rule.
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 Rule, okay. So I've polled the commissioners, and the polling is to continue. Before we do that-
Continue on.
To continue on with the hearing. But before we do that, I would like to just look to legal counsel and make sure that they're comfortable with us continuing the hearing.
Sure, I mean, we, we just have temporarily continued it later in the agenda. We reopened it, you've already made a, a decision on the continuance, so I don't see any issue.
Okay, thank you, Julie. Okay, so did you type up a new resolution for us with changes or? Because that's what we were, that's what we broke for.
Okay, um, well, do you just want to read the changes?
Yeah. Or does he seem okay to you, or what do you want to?
I, I thought we should actually expressly state that the, that our rules require that we have, all information we submit is submitted to our-
Okay, so-
Okay, so-
By-
I'm going to make a suggestion. Did you make copies for us by chance, Scott?
I did not.
Do you want to wait until after lunch and rule on this?
We can go make copies in admin.
I can run down to my office and do it.
Take five minutes.
Yeah.
I think there's some typing involved, too.
Okay. Okay, and I think it's in the actual, the county commission rules, not in the county law.
Oh.
I'm going to, I'm going to ask that we wait until after lunch, so that we can get a copy of it, and the commissioners can read it before we vote, if that's okay with you.
Okay.
We can move on to the next hearing, though, and that way, if there's any changes we need to make to the next resolution, we can do them all through lunch, bring it back after lunch and vote. Is that good? Are you all on board with me on that?
That's great.
Okay.
Okay, so move ahead to 2016-599.
Okay.
Let me go get Kelly.
No, no, no.
No, no, this is still Kirkpatrick.
Sorry.
It's getting confusing.
You're doing what I did earlier.
And then, I don't know where Mr. - I want to, I want to, oh, I can't do that till Kelly's back, so keep going. I'm sorry, I'm totally lost at the second here.
Confirm that you're not here for this one.
Pardon me? Oh, I will, as soon as I open it and I find my notes. Here later, got it. Okay, sorry. Okay. So we will open the hearing for 2016-599. I would like to, just before we open the hearing, confirm that Mr. Kirkpatrick is not in the room, and there is no representation for him. Okay, let it be noted that there was no response, and you're up.
Okay. As you said, this is 2016-599, appeal. This is the appeal of the planning director's denial of commercial cannabis cultivation registration.
I have to interrupt you, I apologize, but Julie just caught me in a mistake.
Okay.
I did not review whether or not we wanted to continue a continuance and vote on this particular-
Was the request for continuance that was, that you received for both of the appeals?
For both appeals regarding Mr. Kirkpatrick.
Should we have a mini-hearing on the continuance first?
We should have a mini-hearing on the continuance, thank you, Julie, for catching that, I appreciate it. Okay, so.
For the same reasons that we decided to deny the request for continuance on the earlier matter, I-
With clarification that there was not a previous continuance on this one?
That's correct.
Okay, and I also wanted for the record note that we have tried to phone him earlier this morning to see if we could get him here, and we have still not received a response. Okay?
And we didn't get the request in time, it was-
Correct. So if I could get a motion to, to not continue and to have the hearing today?
Okay, so that's not part of the first motion? Because I thought he just said that we voted to continue both of the items.
We can't, we have to do them individually and separately.
Okay.
I would like to move that we deny-
Am I correct?
Yes, just, I, things have been confusing, because we had one hearing that we did consolidate, and that was consolidated because it was identical. Facts would relate to both hearings. It was a stipulated consolidation with all parties agreeing. Here we have a different parcel with different facts, and so they have to be heard sequentially.
Okay, thank you, Julie. Okay, I'm sorry, so a motion to deny the continuance?
I move to deny the continuance for the grounds stated before and correcting it for the fact that there has been no prior continuance of this, but all the other grounds still apply.
Thank you, Commissioner Latish. Can I get a second, please? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carrie? Oh, I didn't hear you. Okay, opposed? Okay, motion carries for zero. We will now continue with opening the hearing on 2016-599, and there is still no representation here.
All right, moving along. This one is very similar to the previous one. The parcels actually join each other. This parcel is directly to the north of the, the other parcel for 2016-593. It's, it's the same physical address of 10-420 Hogan Dam Road in Valley Springs. This is parcel number 050021036. Coke compliance conducted inspection on May 23rd. Numerous violations were found on this parcel, including improper posting, hazardous electrical, unlocked gates, and unpermitted hoop houses. Coke compliance notified the appellant of the violations, mailed a correction notice. That correction notice was returned. It's returned to sender, no mail receptacle, unable to informer. As a result, Coke compliance went back out there on September 6, 2017. Again, numerous violations were found, including hazardous electrical, unpermitted hoop houses, insecure fencing, unhoused generators, and illegal camping. Coke compliance officer notified the appellant of the violations. Correction notice was issued, requiring violations to be corrected within 10 days. The appellant signed the correction notice. Here's a copy of that signed correction notice. Coke compliance received correction photos within the allotted timeframe. Along with those correction photos, they also received a note stating that the fence had been repaired, however, there was no picture of the fence, and the other picture submitted still needed verification. Therefore, Coke compliance went back to the site to conduct another inspection. Again, violations were found. The trailer had been moved, however, another took its place. It was the trailer that was required to have been removed from the other parcel. Hazardous electrical was still in place. There is no evidence of generator housing on the parcel, and the fence was not repaired. And as a result, the registration was denied on November 21st for failure to notify the county of the new address, failure to meet fencing standards, failure to house the generators, and illegal camping, and hazardous electrical. This denial was appealed by Mr. Kirkpatrick on January 5th. The appeal letter does not offer any rebuttal of the denial, nor offer any arguments or new information. Simply that he does appeal the decision. So to go over these findings, the applicant failed to notify the county of his new address. We were not able to issue the, the notice of correction to him, and it was returned. Within 72 hours, he did not give us that new address. He also failed to meet fencing standards. Here's a picture of the lack of fence on a corner of property. Where this big pile of dirt is, we have a missing section of fence. He also failed to house generators. There were still, and this is kind of wrapped up in the hazardous electrical on site. So all over the site, there were many, many extension cords and many hot plates and other things plugged into these extension cords. The extension cords ran across the property and all terminated in very specific locations where there was nothing there. There were unhoused generators on the adjacent parcel, just sitting there doing nothing. So it was assumed by the Coke compliance officer that this is the site where the generators were used, since this is where all of the extension cords terminated, and there is no generator housing in these locations, therefore, it's being decided for unhoused generators. Again, the ends of extension cords sitting here in the dirt. There are also illegal camping on site. The trailer had been moved, however, this trailer from the adjoining parcel that had previously been asked to have been removed from that parcel was now on this parcel. Here's a picture of that trailer, if you remember from the last presentation. To sum things up, this application was denied due to the inability to meet ordinance standards, including failure to notify of a new address, failure to fence the property, to not house the generators, and due to numerous hazardous electrical components on the property, as well as the motor home that was being used on site. As a result, staff recommends that you adopt Resolution 2018-013 to deny 2016-599 appeal, upholding the planning director's determination to deny Project 2016-599.
Thank you. Thank you. I'd kind of like to bring Mr. Watts up with some questions, unless you want to ask Scott questions first.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
While I.
Absolutely.
I want to quickly re-review the resolution. I don't see specific finding and evidence about the keeping the county informed of the address, nor of the electrical violations. There's stuff about the generator, and I didn't know if you wanted it. If I'm missing something, please point it out. If not, you probably want to add that when we get around to the resolution.
Well, that's why I wanted to bring Mr. Watts up, was on the electrical, and I believe that you're correct in that.
That's fine. I just want to put Scott on notice. Maybe something, maybe.
He's on notice. Mr. Watts, was there illegal electrical work running about the property besides the extension cords to nowhere?
Just the extension cords.
But they weren't hooked up to anything?
No, they all, as Scott said, they all kind of stretched through the growth site, came back to one point, and you could see in the dirt, like the marks where the generator used to be, but clearly, they removed it just before we came in.
Did they know you were coming, you had an appointment?
They didn't know we were coming, but the nature of the property has a very long driveway with a gate at the end, so I had to call beforehand to get them to come down to the gate, and then we were waiting, we were waiting for a good five, 10 minutes for somebody to show up.
And if an extension, if a generator was on the end of one of these cords, what would a purpose have served where the cord would have been running to? What could it have been running and servicing?
So the cords were running, at this point, the cords were running to sort of like hot plates.
Oh, hot plates, cooking, okay, got it. That makes sense.
I think it's to do with killing pests on the plants, but that's where they went to.
Okay, that makes more sense. Okay. Were there any other questions?
On the, we referred to the motor home in the earlier, and we're referring to a trailer here, but I think it, that's the, that's the same thing, so you would have no problem with referring to it in the resolution as a motor home?
No, I think that'd be appropriate.
And could you describe specifically why you concluded that the camping was illegal as far as the more than 14 days requirement?
It's actually on the other side of the trailer, there's bags of garbage on the other side of there. The, like, the septic pipe is uncapped.
So the.
And there was previously.
It looked like household-type garbage?
Yeah, like food waste, food packaging, that kind of thing. There was another trailer on the property, which they did remove, but put this one in, in a different area.
Okay.
And I'd like to point out that the camping provisions of the code do not allow 14 days for separate trailers or separate tents. It's just total number of days, so you don't get another 14 days to put another motor home on site.
If you move it, you don't get 14 days here, you move and then 14 days. I mean, seriously, because that isn't state law?
Well, if you move, well, from parcel to parcel, you get 14 days on a new parcel, but if you already had 14 days or something else on that.
In a campground, you can go back, right?
When did you bring?
Oh, if, if it's an actual campground, yes.
Does it state, I don't know where it states in here that you can't move it and then come back?
On our, on our, it's 14.
I believe you just referred.
14 consecutive days.
Yeah, not more than 30 days per year, yeah.
So the fact that they, you know.
We can't document that.
From May through September.
I need to ask you a question. I'm not sure, are you still answering another one?
No.
You can go ahead and.
Back on this motor home thing, I couldn't quite hear what you said. Did you say there was garbage laying around outside of it, outside this?
On the other side, there's a bag of garbage hanging off the door.
One bag?
Yeah.
How about, how about pipes leading or for draining the toilets?
There was, there appeared to be an uncapped septic pipe, but there was no, like, water pipes hooked up to it.
So, if you don't mind, Chair, Tom, if you could just explain, if you think that there was camping in excess of 14 days or more than 30 days within a year, do you think that, and then explain why you think that?
Yeah, I couldn't say for certain that this particular trailer has been used for 14 days in this particular location. As I said, there was another trailer on the property that appeared to have been used for much longer. He was told to move that one, and then when we went back, that one had been moved, and this one had been brought in instead.
But, but what is your, you're stating your conclusion that it was used for more than 14 days. We have one bag of garbage.
No water, no sewage.
Did you look, did you, could you see whether the trailer was being used as residential use, or do you have?
No, I didn't go inside it.
Do you have any, other than the, the bag of residential-type garbage, that's, that's our, that's the indication that it's been used for more than 14 days?
Yes, there isn't, I don't think there's a photo in here of the previous one. The previous trailer had more.
Stuff around it.
Sort of, yeah, chairs, more items surrounding it.
I guess my question would be, and I think you already stated it, but just for clarity, can we, without any uncertainty, say that's been there more than 14 days? Because I.
I couldn't say that that particular trailer has been in that spot for 14 days, no.
Okay.
But the basis for that statement is what?
The totality of the previous trailer being there, and then coming back and finding this one on the same property, I concluded that the camping had been going on, on the property for more than 14 days.
I think what's confusing.
In different trailers, if not.
It has to be 14 continuous days.
And there's no pictures of the previous trailer that was on this property, correct?
Not in this presentation, I don't think.
But Thomas is testifying that it existed, he saw it.
Right, I think that's what's confusing us, is that we're not necessarily talking about this trailer for 14 days. We're talking, there was another trailer there prior to this one.
Yeah, correct.
Well, this one's pretty mobile to me, so there's no water hooked up to it, there's no sewage spread out all over the ground like the other one. And they could turn the key and drive it off.
It's one bag of garbage.
And it's gone. It's not on blocks. There's nothing permanent about this particular unit, but the other one there was.
Yes.
Okay, then, then that would be, that was, that's more clarity for me as far as the checkbox being checked that says camping more than 14 days, so we're going to be ruling on that with the other one, because I'm not comfortable in ruling in this particular picture, correct?
We don't have any evidence involving the other one.
I do, because I have code compliance before me testifying that that is the fence.
Okay, so, forgetting about the one on September 6, 2017, tell us about the other trailer and why you thought it had been used for camping for more than 14 days continuously.
I think that is the one from September 6.
Oh.
This is September 27.
Oh, this is 27, so we are on, okay, then I'm confused. So, September 6, 2017, which is being cited in the evidence in the resolution. We don't have a picture of that one, but you saw it.
Unless there was a picture included in the recommendation for denial.
Well, that's, I mean, we have your testimony, so, again, I'm sorry, wiping this from our minds, thank you. On September 6, and it was, okay, oh, I see, later, later in the evidence, we talk about the trailer being brought in, which is that one, but if we just talk about what you saw on September 6, and that trailer, what were the indications that it had been there for more than 14 days that we could include as evidence in a, in a resolution?
I seem to remember seeing, as I said, chairs and other, you know, bits of furniture, items lying around that would suggest people have been there for longer than two weeks.
But not necessarily, that's not necessarily residential use, and it could be an office, correct?
I suppose so.
Okay.
When you wrote them up for that, did they, I'm looking for their, he didn't give us a response. So you wrote him up, saying that continued use of 14 days, but he didn't give us any testimony, or on his, his, "I'm appealing you because that trailer wasn't there for 14 days." He didn't deny your, not where there weren't accusations, he didn't deny what you put in writing.
No.
Did he contact you via email in any way, shape, or form, other than the county hearing about the appeal? Did he say to you, "I could fix this"?
He came into the office at one point and gave me that series of photos, I think you mentioned earlier, with his handwritten notes on it.
Okay.
I think that was the only, only contact I had.
But he didn't say any, he didn't say, "I didn't do it."
No.
Okay, are you, do you have any further questions for Mr. Watts? No?
No.
What about the address? Is there an address situation in this case?
Scott might be.
Incorrect address or something?
Scott might be better equipped to deal with that one, but I just know that I sent the first correction notice out to the address listed in the application, and it came back, returned to sender.
I noticed on two letters from Willie, Mr. Kirkpatrick, he uses for his own address, he typed 10-420 Hogan Dam Road, Farmington, California.
That's mailing.
For Valley Springs?
He probably gets his mail delivered from Farmington, not from Valley Springs.
Yeah, mailing addresses are from wherever the mail truck originates, so they often don't follow what you perceived it, but then you should.
So when we wrote to him December 22 of 17 and used Farmington, that was our error?
I believe, it's actually was on his application.
Well, whatever we wrote, he got the denial letter, because he did come in to file an appeal.
So we have, yeah, we have mailing address being Farmington on both under registrant and landowner, and physical address being Valley Springs on both registrant address and landowner.
And that appears to be the same address he used, and which the water board uses.
So there really isn't any issue with a bad address, or?
Well, we get, we had the Coke compliance return to sender. We've, we've had numerous, numerous things returned to us that we sent to him.
On this file? On the previous one, too, and this one?
Correct.
And also additionally, he did notify the water board of a change of address, provided appeal box 642 Copperopolis. So he didn't notify the water board, but he didn't notify the planning department.
Because that's a whole new address that's not in here. We have, okay. So the copper address is what you were looking for?
Apparently.
And, but we wouldn't have known that had we not received additional documents from the water board that had that, the new address on it, which, actually, which we, I didn't even notice until just now.
And that was on the previous item, right? That you got that.
Right.
That's true, yes.
Mr. Watts, did you have any email communications with him at all?
No, I think he said he didn't have an email address. That's why I mailed out the notice the first time.
Okay. Okay, well, if there's no further questions, I'm going to take it to public comment. Are you ready for that? Okay, all right. So is there anybody from the public that would like to comment on this appeal? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment and bring it back, and I'm assuming you have nothing to do rebuttal on. Okay, so I'm going to close the hearing, bring it back for reconsideration to the commissioners.
Well, I, especially since we have a default situation here, I think we want to make sure that if we, I am for denying the appeal. I question the camping finding and evidence. I'm not saying that I disbelieve anything that Mr. Watts said, it's just that I think we want to make, we want to be very clear on every ground, and I would eliminate that, but I would, I do think we need to add something about the electrical, and if the planning department wants it, about the address. About the failure to keep the planning department advised.
Thank you, Matt.
Okay.
On the trailer issue, I'm tending to disagree with my fellow commissioners from what I've heard so far. When I read the, the evidence as it's stated, it reminds me that there's a totality of this situation where you got, we really do have the two parcels, and we've got this trailer being moved back and forth, and, and I don't know that the ordinance really does require it to be any one specific trailer or motor home or whatever. It's camping that's illegal, and I think he was doing camping for more than the 14-day period, using a temporary structure, and that temporary structure seems to have changed, but in any event, he's trying to avoid the law, and I think, I think we should keep item three in there.
I agree that we should keep item three in there. I do believe that we need to change it. I don't know what the first one was. Was it a trailer or was it a motor home? That in the first one that we looked at, we recognized it as a motor home. So I think in this one, if the first thing that was out there was a trailer, it needs to say trailer, but I believe that when he went back out there, it needs to say motor home, because it was a motor home.
Right.
So the motor home was the later one, the September.
But we need to add to the evidence something, some evidence that this was used for camping for more than 14 continuous days, and then that's, that's where I, I mean, one bag of garbage on a, on a motor home, I mean, I don't know about you, but we generate more than one bag of garbage over three days.
But I think that Mr. Watts explained to us that the camping actually was the first, it was the trailer. It doesn't matter, the motor home doesn't really matter what it was moved there for. It was, you could tell, it was parked, it was parked. It was the first trailer, it's violating the 14 days, correct?
Well, the, the full ordinance is cumulative 30 days maximum, and so I think that's really where this question arises. If they were, if they were there more than 14 days as of the 6th of September, and there's still camping occurring on the property on the 27th of September, I think it can be reasonably assumed that they have exceeded their 30-day, their, their 30-day allowance for any sort of camping whatsoever on the parcel, regardless of what that camping is taking place inside of.
If this was used as an office, there would not be camping, correct?
Correct, but while, while Officer Watts, his evidence may not support a 14-day in-a-row finding, he did state that it did appear to be being lived in, not just being used as an office.
But he, he said he didn't look inside, that there was furniture outside, etc. It's just, I, I fully believe that there was camping here in violation of the county. I just don't see the, I'd have, I'd be hard-pressed to come up with a statement to put in the evidence that supports that, and since we're doing this on a default basis, I just think it weakens our, our conclusion.
All right, well, I'm just sitting here, and it's, it's kind of a tough one, but, but Mr. Watts was there three times. I believe that his testimony is pretty accurate. I mean, I think he's good for his word, I would hope, after this much time.
Oh, I, I think he's good for his word.
I, I'm good with it staying in there at this point.
Somebody has to come up with lang, I think somebody has to come up with language, but all we have is the finding that there was evidence of illegal camping on the parcel. We get on the evidence, and we just have the presence of these two vehicles there.
Well, we can.
And so somebody ought to, has to fashion a little, something that, that's going to give us the evidence of either the more than 14 days. us the evidence of either the more than 14 days in a row or more than 30 days in a year.
We could, we could say something to the effect that Officer Watts visited the site three times, observed evidence in the form of household refuse, furniture, and other items which he thought were indicative of residential use of the trailers, and then based on his experience inspecting cannabis cultivation sites, that he inferred that it was used for residential purposes and that camping had occurred either for 14 days consecutively or more than 30 days throughout the course of the season.
That's a really good statement. I mean, I think it's supported by David.
Okay. So is that the only changes that we see, or are there other changes? Because they're going to have to correct this for us at lunchtime, both of these resolutions, and bring them back to vote on after lunch. You see...
Does everybody agree that we need to add something?
I agree that we can, we can clarify some language in there based on testimony.
But I mean, the, the electrical and the failure to keep planning department informed, should be added?
Oh, I definitely believe that.
I agree.
Yes. Good job. Okay, so you're going to add the electrical. Okay. Is there any further comments by the other commissioners?
No, ma'am.
Okay. So then we are going to put this vote on hold until after lunch, when you come back with our new resolutions. I'll give you some extra time so that your lunch isn't interfered with. But I want to bring something up before we go to lunch, because we have about 15 minutes here, which we don't have to use, but I want to use. After we had the hearing on item number three, appeal number 2016929, Mr....
Gibowitz.
Say it again?
Gibowitz.
Okay, that's good. Came, and he was here in the audience, and he said, "I missed my hearing," and he wanted to know if there was any chance whatsoever of being able to pick up, and...
That was the second one?
That was the third item on our agenda.
So are we recalling, are we bringing back as our motion to reopen the Gibowitz hearing to discuss what you're about to discuss?
Is he here?
He is not here because I told him we wouldn't be hearing it for a long time, if we even rehear it. So I would like, to what Julie's indicating is, I would like to reopen that right now and say, would you want to reconsider and give him a chance to...
I'm sorry, can I bring Kelly in to this?
I do. Oh, my gosh, thank you.
You're a parliamentarian.
What we do now, thank you. Thank you, Officer Watts. We started without you.
Refresh our recollections of what we did with Gibowitz.
Well, I have to go back to it. Okay, so what we're discussing is possibly reopening a hearing for the third item on our agenda, which was 2016929. So I wanted to reopen the hearing to have a simple discussion on the fact that he showed up after we had the hearing, and he was asking if there was any chance that it could be reopened and he could give testimony and we would reconsider. So I'm, I was reopening it to discuss it with all of you to see if, and he is not here right now, I realize that, but I had told him it would be later this afternoon, that we would not be going back to it until then. So I want to know if we would like to reconsider letting him testify and having him come back this afternoon, or if you want to stand on your vote and keep moving forward? That's the question. So...
I'd like to stand on my vote and move forward.
I don't see the harm in reopening for his testimony.
So what we would consider asking him to do, because I don't want to have to start all over with staff reporting out, what I would like to do, and it was suggested that this could be done, is that he could go over to the planning department, watch the video or listen to the hearing, and then he'd be able to testify on what we've already heard so that we could speed things up this afternoon.
And then put him at the end of the calendar.
Yes, put him at the end of the calendar.
Is that video available?
Is that possible, Susan? It is possible, okay.
Yeah, I put him at the end of the calendar, sir.
But it depends on if you even want to reopen. I just think that for safety purposes, it's a good idea, then we don't get it kicked back to us because he couldn't testify.
But it's going to set a precedence for every other person that decides to show up whenever they want, that, hey, we can move it today and go, no, we're here. So I say, no. He was advised to be here at a certain time.
And if the board of supervisors kicks it back because he came late and we didn't hear it anyway, because they've already set precedence for us that they don't approve of us doing that and that they will make us rehear it, we're...
What was the reason why he was late?
I did not ask.
He told me he just didn't make it on time.
I talked to him outside, he said his car didn't start. He had a hard time, well, he had a hard time getting his car started, is what he told me. Because he obviously didn't make it.
I agree with the chair, I think we should put it at the end of the calendar, and if he has a chance to look at the, the presentation, that's great, save money, save time, and I think this could come back and bite us if we didn't. So I'd, I'd say let's let him do his, present his case.
I agree.
Okay, so there's three. I will need to take a formal vote to reopen the hearing and have the hearing at the end of the day, based on the fact that he will take the time to get to YouTube and watch the earlier presentation.
A question for counsel is, what exactly are we doing? Are we reconsidering or are we...
Well, I think, I mean, I think what is being proposed here is that he can listen to the staff presentation and evidence, and he can present his case, you can take rebuttal from both sides, and then re, and then see if you want to reconsider your vote.
Okay, so at this point, we're just reopening and then we can reconsider our vote?
Reopening, and then there would be, after hearing more testimony, you can decide whether you want to, somebody wants to move for reconsideration.
Okay.
And just to be clear about that, we're going to need to know who made the motion in the second, because those are the people that would have to agree to reconsideration. So not just anybody can say we're going to reconsider, it has to be the motion in the second.
I thought it was the people who voted in the majority, which I think was five. I don't think it matters who did the motion in the second.
Okay. Well, we'll hear his testimony and then we'll get there. So we're not taking a motion? We are, we're going to make a motion to, as to whether or not we're going to reopen his hearing and put it at the end of the agenda. So I would like a motion for that.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so four, one. Commissioner Sisk, okay. So the only other thing is that I told him that we won't hear it until late this afternoon. This agenda has moved far quicker than I had expected it to, so out of courtesy, could we make a phone call to him during the next hour and a half and let him know it's going to not be so late in the afternoon, because I think we're moving a lot quicker than I thought we would?
Yeah, I'll, I'll call him.
Okay, thank you so much.
Well, I think we need to make sure we emphasize to him that he needs to get himself up here to review and watch the video.
Correct.
Before we do this, because I think that's important.
It is. Okay. So as much as I think we've made progress, we have three hearings that we're going to be going back to when we come back from lunch. Okay, so I'm going to let us adjourn for lunch, and we'll be back here at 1:00. And when we come back, Scott, please make sure that we have those resolutions so that we can read them.